Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting for the Board of County Commissioners. It is June 1st, 2020. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome people, and we do have someone in our audience that would like to speak, Kathleen Brady, if you want to come to the podium. And before Kathleen starts speaking, I want to acknowledge a letter from, an email from Linda Hitten regarding opposing taking down Royal Park into parking. So, thank you, Linda, for your letter. Kathleen?
Good morning. I would like to talk about crimes against humanity and treason that has occurred in this country. What is going on has made me sick to my stomach. I would like to understand why all of this criminality continues in this government today. When Dr. Fauci wrote a paper that says that the people who died of the Spanish Flu in 1918 didn't really die of the Spanish Flu, they died because they were forced to wear masks. And their mask grabbed bacteria in the fungus, which then reinfects the person. So, we're continuing to wear masks in some places. Hospitals that receive public money have no authority to surrender the constitutional rights of their patients. The criminality that is going on, COVID's never been isolated, and yet we seem to have variants. How is that possible? When you put masks on children, it's dehumanizing, and it is, it is a crime against humanity. So, I would like to know what's going to happen. We have a 2020 election that was stolen. We believe it was stolen. What happened in the state of Oregon? Nobody did an audit. Why didn't they do an audit? Well, I assume because they know that anybody with a brain does not believe that Deschutes County went blue while the rest of the country went red, went right. So, we have a fundamental problem here in our government. It is no longer functioning. It is no longer following any laws, and I've had enough of it. So, if you guys would like to straighten out this election, because right now every single one of your seats is illegitimate. When you do not prove that you won your seats in 2020, and every single person, you, you, and you, were either in the 2020 election or 2022 election, I don't see any efforts to make, to fix this election problem. That makes you all illegitimate, according to the law. So, you all have a choice. We're either going to get to the bottom of all this, or you guys are going to leave the office, because that's where we're at. This American is done tolerating treason. Have a good day. God bless you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you very much.
Chair, just for the record, since we didn't have the sign-in sheet?
Oh, we do have it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, she did it. I just picked it up. Yes, of course. Thank you, Kathleen. She's filled it out.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I picked it up. Was that not protocol?
Okay. Thank you. I just, I know we have, somebody else wants to speak, and we didn't have any other sign-in sheets. My fault.
Okay, so we're out of sign-in sheets. Okay, Mr. Coon.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is William Coon. I live at 65575 Seismar Road, which is in the middle of the Tumalo Winter Deer Range. Many of you have been out there to see the location, and you know at the top of my drive there is a, there was a huge bend warning sign about the very sharp curve. Over the years, there have been a number of accidents there where people driving too fast go off the road. During the past three weeks, there have been the 37th and 38th cars go off the road, and I'd like to just let you know that, in my opinion, the road department's trying their best to make sure that things are safe out there. However, I'd like to say that they're probably too safe, meaning I'd like to see speed bumps or, you know, some kind of a traffic signal saying, you know, you're speeding. You know, these radar-type signs that come on when you're going too fast. Heck, I'd even be happy to pay for them. But I'd also like to speak about the other types of vehicles that are on Seismar Road. This past weekend, there were a caravan of four off-road vehicles that went by. They are the type of vehicles that can be bought at Lowe's, for example. They are not sold by automobile dealers generally. I do know that they can be licensed, that you can buy, you know, register it with the state and put a license on them, but when they are on Seismar Road, they are illegitimate. They are wrong. I think you know what I'm talking about. At least, I hope you do. They're called ranch vehicles or farm vehicles. If you have ideas for it, I'd be, you know, happy to hear them, and am encouraging that we do something about the speeding within the winter deer range. Any comments, questions?
If you could put your comments into, in writing in an email, then it'd make it easier for us to relay those to the road department.
Great, great. I have been in contact with the road department. They are very aware of the situation. I commend Chris Doty. He's done a fantastic job. And even the sign, the people that do the signage out there, you know, we're on a first-name basis out there, because they have to keep putting up new signs.
Are they stolen?
No, they're crashed into.
Okay. Where it says, "Curve ahead, slow down," and they get the sign?
Yes, but the most recent one was, one sign was taken out. It was a speed sign saying 25 miles per hour, but in front of my drive, it's 15 miles an hour. And vehicles go by, they're like going 40 miles an hour. Anyway, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. And Mr. Doty, perhaps we would be watching the meeting this morning, and we'll let him know that you're missing signs, and we're up to number 38 then, the cars that have gone off. That's, that's up there, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the room? Laura, do we have anybody on Zoom with a raised hand? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. We do have a consent agenda?
I'll move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Just a bit of discussion. So, item number one, the lease between Deschutes County and Mosaic Medical, just acknowledging that, you know, that is valuable space. We're always talking about space needs, especially at the Courtney Building, and we have our partner there, but just acknowledging that that's a zero-sum lease, that we're supporting the balance of the CCBHC out there, but, you know, that's a space need choice that we're making by doing this lease, so. I'm supportive of it, just acknowledging it.
Okay. It did say that we're adding two new rooms. Was that, I do have a question about that. I just want to know if that's within the square footage they already have. It wasn't quite clear. Maybe that question just could be answered.
Nope, there we go.
I'm sorry, this is kind of out of order. Maybe we should go ahead and approve the rest of the consent and then...
So, if we want to, yeah, let's acknowledge that.
I just want to pull that one, just to know if you can clarify that for us. Commissioner DeBonne, otherwise consent without one?
I'll move consent agenda minus item number one for discussion.
And Commissioner Chang?
Second.
And Chair votes yes. Yes.
I'll vote yes.
So, I did, I did highlight that.
In completing the vote, just confirming.
Yes, Chair votes yes.
And yes?
Already?
Well, yeah, I was just acknowledging.
We were just, we were just seconding.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne, your vote?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Okay.
Item one, then, if you want to clarify that for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris Weiler, Deschutes County Property Management. I think, I have Chris Weiler here, and I think he'd be best equipped to answer that question.
So, this is dedicated clinical space. These are exam rooms, nursing stations in the Courtney Building that are being used by Mosaic Medical as a part of our CCBHC project. So, in the original agreement, we had excluded two exam rooms. We just left them for the purpose of if we needed them in the future, and as it turns out, we didn't need them, and so they did need to add another provider there, and so they had requested to just have permission to be able to use the two exam rooms that we had there. So, it's within the same footprint of the clinical space. They have been using the exam rooms with our permission, verbal permission, but we just were trying to clean up contractually to give them the right to actually use those two other exam rooms.
Okay, so you're saying it's within the 2,732 square feet?
Yes, we're not, it's not additional space outside of the clinic. It's literally within the footprint.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
As I say, my comments are just acknowledging that, you know, we are hosting Mosaic Medical and a great complement of the CCBHC, but it's just that push and pull on our space needs that we're hosting an external clinic in our facility.
Okay. Is there a motion, then, to approve this document?
Move approval of document number 2022-210, a lease between Deschutes County and Mosaic Medical.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also just say I don't see a lot of, there's, the partnership that this one makes me think of is the Becky Johnson Center. I mean, there are, we have other examples of county-owned property and facilities where we're hosting partners to perform critical services for our community that we are not necessarily set up to provide, so. I, you know, similarly, I want to acknowledge that there is, you know, that is county space that we otherwise could be using for, might be able to use for other county purposes, but, you know, in my mind, this is an excellent setup where there are services that we really want to be available to the community, and we can get those services out there by providing the space for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I do believe we need to reconvene as the governing body of the Sun River Service District for item number seven.
Yes, Commissioners, before you is consideration of Board Resolution 2022-031, and also a board order in the form of a certificate, and that's 2022-026. You'll recall there was a public hearing a number of months back when you authorized allowing this matter to proceed to the, this recently concluded May ballot, and it was approved by the voters, and this is the sort of final paperwork necessary for the district and its lenders to move forward with the actual financing. I don't see anyone from Sun River here today, so I'm assuming they felt they didn't need to appear here. Again, this isn't a public hearing, so this is just an opportunity for the Board to discuss. If you have any questions, I can do my best to try to answer those.
Do we need to pass the 022-0262?
Yes.
Certificate? We need to do both of them, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's per the lender and the financing mandates.
Okay. All right.
And then also in the resolution, the fourth whereas, it says the county clerk is expected to certify the results of the capital levy election on June 13th. So, I'm glad to see that whereas in there, because we're ahead of that date, but we do expect it to be certified and passed. So, it's just an opportunity to get the business done as, you know, other reference points need to be completed.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion, then, for this resolution?
Yes, I'll move board signature of resolution number 2022-031, a resolution authorizing the Sun River Service District to proceed with issuance of full faith and credit obligations not to exceed $7 million to finance a portion of the cost of the remodel and expansion of the Sun River Public Safety Building. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes?
Okay, and I can move board approval of order number 2022-026, a certificate authorizing full faith and credit obligation of Series 2022 bonds.
So, one question, is this for all three signatures or for Chair signature?
Chair signature was the order.
Yep, okay.
And that's how they asked it to be drafted, the lender.
Yep, just acknowledging Chair.
I mean, I'm responsible for $7 million.
$7 million. I'll second.
No, but they need your signature.
Full faith and credit.
I just, you know, I had to ask. Okay, so, Mr. Chang, Commissioner?
I seconded.
Okay, yes, Commissioner DeBonne, thank you. Any further discussion? None. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The lenders are working with Steve Dennison, the clerk, and upon the certification, they'll get some final paperwork from him, and then they can proceed. They wanted to move as quick as possible after the certification, in light of the interest rates spiraling up at this point.
Yes. Thank you. Well, that's good. All right. We need now to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. We have item number eight. It's Chair signature. I believe I saw Chris Doty. And Chris, maybe you heard the earlier comments about Seismar Road and Mr. Coon's house, because 38 cars have now gone off the road?
Yes, that's the word, and we will send a crew up there to evaluate the recent incident and, you know, kind of maybe have a fresh-to-the-eyes look at what could be done to hopefully draw more warning to that, to that curve, so, thank you.
We could put, like, strips across the road. Is that legal?
Well, we've, there's some things we can try that are probably more in our toolbox than outside at the moment, and I think those would be worth considering first, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. You bet. So, good morning, Chris Doty, Road Department Director. For the record, covering for Cody Smith today, his staff report. Before you is a notice of intent to award contract for engineering services for the Smith Rockway Bridge and Gribbling Road Bridge Replacement Projects. You may recall that both of these projects were discussed last week in the Budget Committee meeting. In short, these, Board, these are two structurally deficient timber bridges within the county system. The Smith Rockway Bridge is load-posted on a route that has access to several large aggregate haulers and suppliers, in addition to an asphalt plant, coupled with the fact that it is an alternative route and a frequent detour route for the O'Neill Highway, and so its capacity to carry big loads is essential, and the structurally deficient bridge kind of stands in the way of that at present. That's Smith Rockway. Gribbling, on the other hand, has a five-ton weight limit, and its use is pretty much limited to passenger cars and light trucks. So, with that, Board, we used a qualifications-based process for this contract and selected David Evans &amp; Associates as the top-ranked firm. We've negotiated a scope of work totaling $523,804.55 for design of the two bridge projects, one of which will mostly be funded with ODOT Local Bridge Program grant funds, as you may recall was discussed last week as well. So, with that, are there any questions?
I thought it was interesting that you could actually combine these two. I mean, why? Just because they are bridge projects? It's, that's, it's allowed?
Yeah, almost, yeah. You know, we're allowed to, you know, contract per state statute, and, you know, we've negotiated scope of work, but we have them separate in terms of scope elements, but because they're such similar projects on similar timeframes, made more sense to couple them together, hire one firm to design and deliver both projects.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Chris, I've, I've asked about the interface with the irrigation canals and, and potential future piping of canals before, and I believe for these two particular bridges, the response was, well, we asked the irrigation districts, and they said they're not going to pipe these for, for a while, you know, there's still a long time to come. But I am wondering if during the engineering process, there are ways that you could look at the bridge design to kind of facilitate that in the future, you know, make it easier to, you know, slip a chunk of tube of pipe underneath at a certain later point, or, I don't know, if there are ways to, bridges where you could, you know, undo eight bolts and lift the whole thing up and then put it back later, or things like that. But, you know, I'm just wondering if we're coordinating to that, to that extent as, during this design process?
Yeah, to the greatest degree possible, absolutely. If we can't design it in a way that can accommodate future piping underneath the bridge, we'll certainly take into account other elements to hopefully do something that won't be as permanent, per se. I know that we've got good, probably, design information from the canal companies regarding both these bridges, you know, the Smith Rockway, I believe more so than Gribbling, which is not high priority for piping, but, but, you know, we're in close communication with irrigation companies every time we do a bridge and take every, everything we can into effect to the greatest degree possible. That's, that's essential.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move Chair signature of document 2022-089, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for the Engineering Services for Smith Rockway Bridge and Gribbling Road Bridge Replacement Projects.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So, let us know when you figure out what to do out on Seismar.
Will do.
Good morning, Chad.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Centola, Director of Solid Waste. The item before the Board today is authorization of rate adjustments and service changes for Republic Services Divisions, Deschutes Transfer for the rate change and Wilderness Disposal for an addition of services. Deschutes Transfer has requested a 20% rate increase with us. Their profit margin has been steadily declining for a number of years, and in 2020, they did a request through, through the former Director, Tim Shimke, for an 8% adjustment for recycling transfer services only. And at that time, Tim had requested that. They put that on hold while he did a study on, on the service charges that we have with Deschutes Transfer. We had retained J.R. Miller for a rate analysis, and the outcome of that was that the rates that Deschutes Transfer was charging were valid. They were consistent with other agencies that use waste transfer services. In 2021, their, their profit margin ended up being at 0.68%. Our agreements with, with the franchise haulers, their profit margins is allowed to be between 9 and 12%. Their projection for this year is they will be 7.98% in the, in the red. Between the original rate request change back in 2020, they had a loss of one of their strategic financial people at Republic Services, so the rate request kind of languished for a period of time, and they came back to us with, with a new rate request. Obviously, the existing economic situation has changed things substantially, so the request change is for, for 20% for the services they provide for transfer services for the transfer Any questions on, I mean, take this in two parts. One is the rate change, and then the other is the service change for Wilderness Disposal. So, any questions?
I wasn't tracking, or I wasn't able to track from, from the staff memo exactly who's paying that 20% increase. Is that paid, you know, at, at the site when people are dropping stuff off, or?
No, no, this, this is the, what we pay, the Solid Waste Department pays Deschutes Transfer to move waste and recyclables out of our rural transfer stations, so that this does not impact the rates that the public are charged.
And this would, and we would pay for it out of, you know, our franchise fees?
Our operating funds.
And tipping fees?
Correct, and we anticipated this rate change with, with the, our budget for next fiscal year, so we built that 20% rate increase in anticipating that this would, this would come forward.
So, I'll just acknowledge, yeah, this, this is inflation. I mean, it's the cost of doing business. As I say, the tipping fee isn't going up now, but this will be part of the spreadsheet for, for the rest of time, and it always is, so this will just be, you know, the, you know, baking that inflation in the cost of doing business in.
Correct, yeah. And one thing I did mention also, this rate change will bring them back into that 9 to 12% profit margin that they are, they are allowed with us.
Well, it's a great cost-effective partnership, you know, being able to get those, the transfer stations and the waste moved. I see the trucks coming and going all the time, and it's, you know, it's a great system, you know, the, as I say, on the weekends, I'm putting my waste out there sometimes, and knowing that those trucks are keeping it flowing is real important in the, in the whole metal of the system.
We've had a very good working relationship with Deschutes Transfer throughout the years since the transfer system was developed, and I expect that to continue. If there's any, no other questions on the rate increase?
I guess my one other question is, trying to think out the scenario where inflation levels off, you know, like if we're, if we're really fortunate and, you know, the interest rate hikes from the Fed, you know, do what they're supposed to, and supply chains kind of work out the kinks, and the war in Ukraine cools down, and all these things, all these things happen, and, and, you know, inflation comes under control, or even, you know, you know, we see corrections in things. I mean, you know, people are talking right now about, about housing prices actually being, you know, and maybe not here, but in some parts of the country, coming down. If we, if we approve this, we approve this rate increase now, and the actual costs to do business for Deschutes Transfer come, you know, come down, then is there, is there a point where we correct for that, or do we just kind of push out the date when there would be a rate increase again farther and farther?
You know, I think it could be handled either way, either an adjustment in rates if, if the costs do decline, or that if they're exceeding the 12% margin and are running above, that, that would forego a rate increase for a period of time. So, I haven't crossed that bridge during my career here, and I think it's a very rare circumstance that that would occur, but there's a couple of ways to handle it, and if we get to that point, we would certainly revisit that with the Board.
Thank you.
Well, we learned from The Economist that wages are sticky, so, I mean, once wages go up, they usually don't go down, wages. Then the cost of equipment, cost of fuel, cost of replacing, you know, the hardware is, is that, the variables that might happen.
Well, if you look at what diesel is out today and what it was out a year ago, things are, things are really only going to get more expensive.
Fuel costs were definitely one of the driving factors on this current rate request.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned the war in Ukraine.
The second item that's addressed on this, this, this item in the board order is adding additional service boxes for Wilderness Disposal. The Republic Services recently acquired a larger truck that can handle larger commercial boxes, so Wilderness Disposal would like to add two additional boxes to the service offering there. If commercial customers like to use those, it's anticipated they would see a decline in their cost for services, because they would have to have it emptied less frequently. So, the order adds two additional box sizes for the Wilderness Rate Sheet.
So, that's Exhibit A and the container services at the four and six yard?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the two out there on the bottom section down there.
And those are the new items?
Those are the new ones, yes. Yeah, so they, again, they would have, they'd have to have a call-in for the service less frequently. They'd be seeing a little bit of a cost savings on their, their disposal costs.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that. Having a larger container can be cost-effective for a larger project, and it is a function of being able to move them around.
I hate to bring it up, but when we, after we talked to, I have a question for you. Anyway, do we have a motion?
Did you have a comment here?
I know, no, it's something different that I just wanted to ask Chad about afterwards.
Afterwards?
So, don't leave the room really fast. So, is there a motion from someone?
Sure, I'll make a approval of the board order 2022-029 to provide a 20% rate adjustment for services provided to Deschutes County. for services provided to Deschutes County by Deschutes Transfer, and Authorization of the Republic Services to implement the additional container services and rates in the Wilderness Disposal Service area.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, so Chad, how's Fire Free going? I was at the transfer station Saturday and, you know, out on fire here, and it, the pile was huge. Do we have any tonnage out?
You know, our numbers are a little bit lower than last year.
They are lower.
You know, when the pandemic hit, we saw, we had, had not anticipated this, but we saw a large surge in people bringing yard debris in the waste of the landfill. I think it was people that were at home looking for.
It was an outing, remember? It was an outing.
It was an outing, too. So last year, we saw a bit of an increase. This year, it's been a bit lower in participation and tonnage. And I, you know, the, the policy might be seeing at the transfer stations could, could also be material that we've been collecting on our, you know, prior to Fire Free with our regular services. We try to limit the grinding to a couple of times a year, so there's, there's a stockpile material there before Fire Free as well.
Right.
Yeah, numbers are down a little bit this year.
Okay, all right. Well, just reminding the community that it's still available through this Saturday?
Saturday.
Yes, so please, if you have not cleaned up around your house, it's time to get out there and do that. I know, thank goodness, my son was doing, helping what I wanted to have cleaned up. So that was great, but truly, yeah, it seemed very, very busy on Saturday.
It always is, even with the decline in numbers, it's, it's still a busy event.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for that. And then my second question is, are we ever going to be able to, every, you know, we just heard the DMV is closing down Redmond for the summer. And I was just at that Redmond facility. They seemed a bit shorthanded. You couldn't read the number when you came in and pulled the number. You could barely read it. It didn't have a good look to it, but truly, Redmond's a community of over 30,000 people. So truly, that isn't a good decision. But what about expanding our, our hours in Lapine? Because I know that's, that's a really busy facility down there, and has that worked out at all budget wise?
We, we, it's on our agenda for our monthly update meeting with Nick tomorrow to discuss it, and we'll be bringing it forward to, to, to the Board here shortly. So we have looked at what the, what the numbers look like for expanding services at, at Southwest.
Okay, all right.
So, and I'd be supportive of that also, knowing that, you know, it's a function of the FTE, and, you know, who's going to show up for that shift and then back that person up also. I know it's, it's kind of a dicey call, but if we have the FTE and we can do that, I'd be supportive of looking into it.
Well, I was asking for the DMV to expand their days in Lapine, and I know Commissioner DeBonne has to. Truly, that's a community of like 30,000 people, and to ask them to drive to Lakeview to go to the DMV, you know, or to come to Bend, it just seems like, you know, they're, they're going the wrong, they're going the wrong way. And, yeah, so.
Sterling with the growth in Lapine, we're seeing that at the transfer station, Commissioner DeBonne, your regular use of that site, there's times where there's a bit of a line there, waiting, waiting for, for space there. And, you know, the, the thinking is that adding those days will help relieve that. It ends up being a financial decision on, on, on the staffing for it. So like I said, we'll, I'll be having that conversation with, with Nick tomorrow, and we'll be moving forward from that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So then just acknowledging, you know, passing that order is the complete package again of all the rates, and that's kind of the philosophy of even the attachments or the exhibits that haven't been updated are the whole package.
It's, it's, it's an easier way to, to, to manage that, those, the, the rate orders, have, have it done collectively rather than have individual exhibits each time we do a change. It's a, it's a housekeeping thing for us. It helps keep it, keep it straight.
Very good. I could just circle back to Fire Free for a moment. Are, are we still having to put Fire Free material into, directly into the landfill on ground?
This year, all of the Fire Free material that came to Knott Landfill was buried directly. We are getting so much, we just can't use it fast enough. And there, there's fire risk with having that material on the ground for a long period of time, and we just be, we're losing ground on being able to consume that material. So we had a bit of a savings because we didn't have to pay to grind it. And we'll have more than enough mulch for cover operations coming out of the transfer station. So a, a number of people commented to us about that, and we explained it to them, they seemed to understand that. But I, I would, I would definitely like to see some other use for that material, but this is truly the only option we have at this point.
Do we have an under, a sense of how much? How much consumption of space costs us? I mean, you know, like, like a whole bunch of unground juniper limbs? I mean, that's a lot of air.
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, we, you know, I, we're working on, on, you know, we're working on blasting out that next cell right now. So, I mean, more, you know, you know, every cubic foot of space inside the, you know, at, at Knott Landfill, actually, it costs us money to, to create this space. And so I, I, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, you know, kind of calculate the trade offs associated with that of, you know, having to put that material that, that could be composted or diverted in other ways directly into, into the ground, and how much space it takes up, and, you know, what the cost of that is versus the, the costs of, of doing something else with it.
We, we can surely calculate that number. We, the disposal, the cost of disposal at Knott Landfill is roughly $35 a ton. So we can make an assumption on the, the volume to weight conversion there and, and calculate a number on what, what that true cost is. You know, as far as composting, the compost facility is running at capacity, and I've been concerned for a number of years they're losing ground on the ability to, to move material out of there. At, at times, it seems to go down, at times it seems to build up. But this, the, the organics component of our waste stream is definitely a challenge these days.
But if we have a, an understanding of kind of the, the financial impact of putting however many tens of thousands of tons of material into, directly into the landfill this year was, then we can hold that up against things like, you know, an expanded composting facility, you know, air curtain burners, you know, and that, things like that, you know, other, other options to dispose of that material, to see whether they make any, any kind of financial sense.
You know, we, we can surely run those numbers, and I can include them in the, the summary report on, on Fire Free this year. Commissioner DeBonne came with us to look at an air curtain burner up in a Blackbeet Ranch a little over a year ago, and the mechanics of how those, those operate and the restriction on, on when you can operate them, it would be a big challenge for us to, to have that work successfully. We would need a, a number of those machines, and there's, there's probably $100,000 more in permitting costs with, with the DQ for, for the air permits for these, these things. So.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't necessarily think that we should be acquiring one, but, you know, the Oregon Department of Forestry is, is trying to acquire a very, like a very large air curtain burner unit to, to be stationed in central Oregon and, and kind of, it, it's, I'm just trying to think about ways to connect, connect and, and, you know, and analyze, you know, the, the, the value of that to our situation. Because, you know, you can imagine if, if ODF is successful in getting that, that, that piece of equipment, that they could, you know, they could make the rounds in neighborhoods instead of, instead of, you know, that material having to come to the landfill in the first place, at which point we, we have no option right now except to put it directly in the ground.
You know, I, I'm constantly have my ears open for potential alternatives out there. Over the years, there's been, you know, biomass facilities proposed in Lapine and Pryonville, a couple of pelletized fuel operations. If, if they ever, if they ever get any traction, we definitely want to have conversations with them.
Commercial viability is pretty unrealistic.
Yeah.
I mean, in my, in my opinion, so. But thank you for, you know, thank you for, you know, just trying to connect these potentially what might seem like disconnected things to, to, to help us come up with a comprehensive system for dealing with. Again, what I'm, what I am concerned is going to be a much, much larger flow of material in, in future years when the defensible space requirements under SB 762 kick in.
Definitely, yeah.
Well, and it's going to be a, a surge of landfill gas someday, right? I mean, we're, we're building the, the cells to capture aggressively, hopefully contracting for a beneficial use of landfill gas in some fashion. So there's a function there, and it's just always the true cost of, of the input supposed to the, the value at the other end.
Right, yeah. You know, and surely any opportunity to diversion, to divert anything out of the, out of the landfill disposal is, is something we need to look at. And unfortunately, there are just not a lot, a lot of options out there at this point.
And then we'll hear about a Mount Bachelor grant request to State Department Energy, hopefully help subsidize their project. So I think, yeah, that, that's coming our way.
So Chad, part of the cost in a Fire Free, are you picking up the fact that some of the materials had to go into Knott? Is that going to be one of the calculations? I noticed that we no longer have people helping unload at, at the transfer stations. You know, what is it, like, eight years ago, seven years ago, there were people there that were, oh my gosh, you didn't have to do anything. Yeah. They were all there, and it was, and, you know, and was amazing. So times have changed, you do the work yourself, but will we be picking up a cost?
We, we will. So a couple of points. So Heart of Oregon, like everyone else, had impacts from the pandemic, and their, their ability to get, to get youth onboard for the services they provide has been a challenge. And so this year with Fire Free, they did not have enough people available. And this year has been a challenge for the department as well to, to staff these. We've, we've, we're, we're making it through, okay? So our, our personnel costs this year on the program will be a bit less, just because we've, we've run with a skeleton crew on it. But we, we do run a cost analysis each year on, on, on Fire Free, and I can certainly share that with the Board.
It's interesting, because yesterday I was with the Ridge View students, seniors, and somehow they were talking about homelessness, but they were talking about working too and applying for jobs. And a lot of these students had applied for jobs they saw posted in the community, and, you know, they put down, probably they were 17 or 18, and no one called them back. And I, I mean, several of the young people said this, and I was really surprised because you see, you know, help wanted signs everywhere, and some people that are 17 or 18 are incredibly responsible, or even 16. And, you know, it was really kind of surprising that, you know, but they all, these, these, this group was graduating, I mean, they were graduating now, but still, they had applied for jobs. And, you know, they said, I called 50 times, I put in three applications, and that company never called them back.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what's going on that.
I know, it's, it's, it's kind of a disconnect with what you think.
Staffing has been a tremendous challenge. Heart of Oregon, we, do you do some, some temporary labor? It's really hard to find people for that. Our application rates on, on positions are definitely down. You know, we did, did modifications of the, the pay scale for, for Scale House attendance. We have a positions open right now that, that are, are posted. Hopefully, we'll get a better response than what we've been seeing in the past year or two.
I will mention that when, when you brought up Heart of Oregon Corps, it reminded me. So another piece of SB 762 was the creation of something called the Oregon Conservation Corps, and the state provided, was basically providing $10 million worth of grants for youth conservation corps initiatives that are going to be focused on fuels reduction in, in, in high wildfire risk communities. And Heart of Oregon and COIC were successful in securing one of those grants, $980,000, something like that. Pretty big grant. And, and they'll be deploying those young people, if they're able to recruit them. They'll be deploying those young people to do fuels reduction treatments on, on private land holdings throughout the tri-county region. But I can imagine that they won't be, that they won't have, you know, work for those, those, that, that, those core crews to do every, every day of the year, and they're planning on running a year round program. So if there are ways, and, and the state is providing a lot of the cost to, to operate that program and to pay, you know, pay that, the students or the, the core members stipend. So conceivably, that would be a way to rope in some, some free labor, or free to us labor to, to help with Fire Free or in, in other ways with disposal of this material. And I can, I can, I can contact them and, and ask about, about those connections.
I've had a couple of conversations with the Heart of Oregon about our, the staffing challenges, and the, the Solid Waste Department really was instrumental to Heart of Oregon becoming established. We, we had lost our arrangement with the, the Sheriff's Office back in, I think it was 1999, 2000. And right then, Dave Holmes put the, the Heart of Oregon together, and we, I think we were their first client. And they, they recognized that, that legacy we have with them, and, you know, they, they expressed their frustration not being able to, to meet some of their obligations with us, and we're all hoping for a better future with them as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Good discussion.
All right. Item number 10. Tanya? And Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Yeah, your, your two remaining items relate to the Community Development Department. The item before you for, for item number 10 relates to the Community Development Department Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Work Plan. And the Board held a hearing on May 11th. You kept the written record open for two weeks. We didn't receive any other public comments. And so for your consideration today is whether you want to, it's noted on the memorandum, there are a couple of options for you, but whether or not you're, you're comfortable acknowledging the work plan. I will say that I anticipate Will Groves as the Planning Manager in late June or early July coming back to the Board in a separate conversation as, as capacity emerges, and I say that delicately, to have the Board prioritize some amendments for staff to undertake as, again, as capacity becomes available. We'll be looking for probably, I'll call it the Goldilocks amendments, those amendments that are somewhat straightforward as opposed to, there are other amendments that have a, a longer lifespan. So that's a, that's a separate conversation. I didn't want to insert it now. There may be some other amendments that have been brought to our attentions or concepts that have been brought to our attention related to, like post, dealing with natural hazards, post recovery, stuff like that, that, that I think warrants a conversation. Anyway, I offer those remarks thinking that it might help in today's conversation or deliberation with the Board as you want to go forward, because there are a number of amendments that are highlighted in the memorandum on, on page four. And again, I think it might be more appropriate to start thinking about how to prioritize some of those in a few weeks' time. So staff's available to answer any questions or comments. Certainly appreciate your continued support for the work plan. It does provide, especially for the long range planning section, an understanding of where your priorities are and how we want to allocate those resources.
So I'm pretty, I'm comfortable, you know, we, and we can pull anything out of here or talk about it today, but I'm comfortable knowing that this is a point in time. It's talk about planning. It's, you know, what's on the horizon, and the future is going to change, so, and we have to just be ready to adapt to it. So just letting you know, that's kind of my mindset here. Wherever we want to, you know, talk about any slight changes is fine. One of the items, kind of content wise on Table 1, I think the action items is really to, to look at decision points. So item number one, a firm amendment, projects in Table 1. Just as I look at the item five, rural accessory dwelling units, and item seven, wildfire mitigation, I just, I think those kind of go together more. I don't know if we want to call them the same thing or put them on the same line, or just put them, I don't, when we, when we talk about priority projects and then we name them 1 to 10, what, how do you, what do we think about that?
I, great question, Commissioner. The, the numbering format on Table 1 is not to emphasize a certain hierarchy. I mean, I, I, there was, I did deliberately put current planning number one with the footnote that acknowledges that we, we have statutory requirements to, to issue decisions within 150 days. But all the other items are there, which are, the Board has basically supported, they, some have already been initiated, like the Transportation System Plan. Later this year, we're anticipating, in coordination with the Road Department, to formally go through the process to adopt the TSP into our comprehensive plan. Historic preservation's another example. You are correct nonetheless, that Senate Bill 391 and Senate Bill 762 are, are interrelated, because as soon as the rulemaking is completed for, as it pertains to wildfire mitigation, we will, a colleague just behind me will be leading that effort to execute amendments that implement the rural accessory dwelling units. So we can certainly make a notation in the work plan if you'd like, or. So we can certainly make a notation in the work plan if you'd like, or if it's helpful. But these are the ones that have been with us for some time and in many respects have certain momentum behind them.
So then as I look at them, I mean, maybe, and just to put them in a slightly different order, put 762 as five, Senate Bill 391 as six, and then Mule Deer as seven. Just, just a proposal. I mean, as I say, they're all high priority projects, not really a prioritized list. These are just actions we're going to be doing. And just ideas from my fellow commissioners.
And it doesn't affect how, I mean, we're going to work, we number them on, on, in this table, it doesn't affect how much work we're going to do on them. So that's fine.
Yeah, so just kind of matching those two up a little closer in the list. That's all I'm thinking. Because I think we're going to be doing them all anyways.
Well, they do go together.
Yep.
I have a question, and you have in Table 2, marijuana inspections now. I thought we were no longer doing annual inspections for people that are licensed. So what, what are we inspecting then?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Tanya, you can correct me if I'm incorrect. Once there's been one inspection by OLCC, I think the process is at that point, it's a recreational marijuana production operation. We've inspected it. OLCC has, has its license, so it's officially in business. Then at that point, at the direction, as I recall, there would no longer need to be any, any other inspection that's performed by county staff annually because OLCC does that on a regular basis. We still have a handful of marijuana production entitlements that have not been vested yet. And those are the ones that are fairly straightforward to inspect in the fall because they shouldn't be operational. And the property owners over the last several years have been very transparent about that. They've either delayed their investment or they're waiting in the queue for OLCC. So that's, that's the difference, Madam Chair, is once they receive an OLCC permit and we've performed one inspection, then we defer to the state.
Okay, then my, my next point, and I believe I sent you some information on this. When someone in our county that owns land gets a permit and then someone else in the county decides that they don't like that project, the fee that the party files is quite immaterial. It's, I think, $250. And it seems like all the burden is on the landowner. And looking at Jefferson and Crook County, they have a bit of a different schedule. And so I honestly think that we need to talk about this at some point in time. I know it's not here, but I really would like to talk about that. I feel like it has been rather burdensome on people that have gotten a permit to go through the process, and then they have to have another hearing. And, you know, it's just.
This is outside of marijuana.
Right, I'm talking about, yes, general.
Happy to have that conversation with you, whether you want to have it now, but you're,
No, I mean, probably not today, but I just, I'm saying that I do think that's important. And then on the third table, number 12, the last one.
A proposal on the item for marijuana inspections, maybe there's just a word could be added, you know, initial marijuana inspections or entitlement inspections, or, you know, just to give clarity on that.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe there's a way to just put a word in there that shows that it's the, the first inspections and they're not annual anymore.
And important for everyone to understand that the workload associated with inspecting these not yet vested applications versus what we were doing before, inspecting, you know, all the operations in depth is, it's a substantially smaller impact on human, on our human resources.
How many people are, how many operations are not into, I mean, that are in that gray zone? Then how many of them do we know?
I mean, Tanya, do you want to join us? You've looked at that table more frequently than me.
Entitled and not, not implemented.
Salzman Senior Planner. I think the people who are kind of in that queue, it's maybe around 10.
That's, yeah, that's.
It honestly changes every day, but something in that magnitude, possibly less than that.
We can give you that number.
And it's a pretty quick inspection. You go out and you, you look and there's nothing happening.
Correct. And they still have to file the paperwork. So it is like, it's a mailing, it's kind of the filing of that and taking it through the process. So there is some administrative work on staff's part, but it's nothing compared to kind of going out and checking, you know, looking at that in depth.
Looking at an operation.
Okay, because I'm hearing that we're still having what is at Black Market operations here in Deschutes County. And then item number 12 on Table 3, I, I would like to have that one moved up to some higher, if it's at all possible. We just looked at that recently and, you know, it seemed like it may be something that Deschutes County would like to address.
Great. Now, this is concerning sage grass coordination? Is that, do I?
No, no. On table number three, the last table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The last one, number 12.
Okay, gotcha.
The one about the right of way and, you know, I really don't want to have like a tower at every right of way.
There's a loophole in our code as it pertains to state right of way. And that's, that's, as I, as I noted at the front end of my conversation, I really, I would like the Planning Manager to engage the Board in a separate conversation to, and this, this is a Goldilocks, I will say, type of amendment. I don't think it'd be all that controversial, all that complex. You just have to go through the process. But I know we have, there's other amendments like ham radio and, and we've got some other amendments that extend beyond housekeeping that we just want to share with you, maybe have you select, you know, two to three, maybe four, that our staff, as capacity emerges, can start chiseling away at those. And so certainly item number 12 would fall into that.
That loophole, yes. I'd like to get rid of that loophole.
Understood.
So those are our opportunity to, yeah, talk about the capacity in the, in the department.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. And we will do that in short order, likely early in the, yeah, when we come back from Fourth of July.
Well, and then having them on this published list is easier to pull them off and say, okay, are we ready for this one?
Yep.
So you think we'll come back in July then, after the Fourth?
If not earlier, late June, no later than, I just looked at it, July 11th. I mean, I'm mindful Fourth of July weekend, but we, we will come back in early this summer to allow you to provide that guidance. And, and like I said, we're going to, long range planning has these ebbs and flows. And I want to take, I would like Will's team to take advantage of those periods of capacity where they can start preparing the amendments. And then with the Board's support to initiate, you know, a small number of them, we can do so and keep admin and the Board in the loop as those work their way through the system. And they'll likely, you know, get, get to the Board, you know, by the end of the calendar year, all things being equal.
So Peter, I realize it's only the first of June. Did you talk to Sherry at all about single family permit applications? I'm just wondering where they're going at this, do we know?
I don't, you mean, in terms of just trends?
Yeah, trends, if we have any trends.
I know that, so I don't have that information, but I have two bits of information I think you might find intriguing. We had our busiest month on, in quite some time for land use. I'd been tracking our monthly intake when we were in the pandemic, just to track volumes. We didn't know where, where, what the pandemic was going to do to our land use activity, but we had well over $100,000 in, in land use applications. So that's a, and again, it was in order.
This May, you're saying?
This May.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, well over 100,000. I know that the, the building inspectors have been extremely busy. I want to say there were over 200 inspections that needed to be performed just recently. But I can get that number back to you, Madam Chair, and certainly to the entire Board. I do think that there, there is a slowdown. And we would all contemplate kind of the reasons for that. But there's a lot of activity, a lot of, you know, as we noted during the Budget Committee meeting, Caldera Springs is in the process of exercising their, it's not even new phase, it's the annex portion, the extension of that development, the West Side Trans Act, the one that Kevin Spencer represents. The Board recently signed an improvement agreement that's going to allow that, that side of the West Side Transit, West Gate.
Wasn't that like nine lots or something?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't.
Wasn't a lot.
Wasn't a lot, but it's another indicator. So, but I'm happy to get that information for you.
Okay, I felt badly asking you on June 1st, but thank you for that information.
There's some great monthly reports that come out of the department also.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's just, it's, it's only the first of June, so those reports will come out for a few days.
We haven't, we, like, it's not, I'm not kidding, like, the biggest May we had over the last six, seven years was 80,000 in land use fees. This was, I mean, I don't know why I'm, we had over $140,000 of land use application fees, big ones, kind of your standard variety. And, you know, some of that may be due to the fact that people are mindful of July 1st and fee increases for, for the land use planning division. But nonetheless, it's, I think it's another promising sign that there's tremendous interest and investment being contemplated in the rural county.
So did you say 140,000?
I did.
Okay, because you said the biggest before had been like 80,000?
Over the last six to seven years, as I was tracking it, yeah. So it was an order of magnitude. There's more plan amendment zone changes, lots of non-farm, there's a handful of non-farm dwellings, but just, yeah, tremendous interest, a variety of applications that are being contemplated. And it's, as Nick knows, it's, this is the time of year where we start seeing those applications, just maybe not quite at that, that amount. So it's a, it's a, it's a good sign.
Okay, great. Thank you.
A good discussion on those three tables, and that's very valuable. So with that discussion, I'm supportive of approval, unless you, would you want to edit the document for approval or?
If it's, just to be mindful of your, of your time, if you, one thought is, I look to Dave, is, you know, you know, following the direction of the Board, I mean, this isn't a land use proceeding. But based on the input and direction that the Board of County Commissioners has offered staff, you know, the consideration of adopting, of acknowledging the work plan for next fiscal year, and we'll make notes, and I'll make sure we elaborate more fully in the actual work plan to reflect the comments today. So I reflect that back to the Board if that's helpful considering deliberation and I don't motion.
Okay.
I can move approval of the Community Development Department Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Work Plan amended as discussed today.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to acknowledge what a great work product for all of us, you know, the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission, and people that want to move to or build on their existing property. Just the, the reports from the departments, which make up half of this, and then the prioritized list of projects, just an amazing work product that's so valuable for the community. And not everybody's going to pull it off and read it, but the people that want to know more, this is a great piece of information for the land use of Deschutes County.
Thank you again for your support.
Thanks to the Community Development Department for taking on such important work for our community.
Okay, for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And thank you very much. And I did send you another email about that pesky black plastic.
And that is not a use, that, those, Chair Dairs received a complaint by a frustrated constituent who's experiencing black tarp-like material that's blowing onto others' property that was utilized at one time for hemp production. And that is not a use that's protected for under right to farm. And so our code compliance team will, will alert that property or of, of the violation or the nuisance that they're creating and respond accordingly. But people have misconceptions that, you know, one's practices on a, on a, on a EFU zone property are insulated under right to farm, but that, you don't get to allow materials or garbage, I dare say dust. Some of that can cross into nuisance and certainly one's tarping materials that are getting on others' property. And some of, it sounds like there was an incident of digestion of that by, by, I don't know, it was cattle or a horse, but that's not protected under right to farm. So we will certainly follow up.
Because, I was just going to say, because our hay crop is so impacted with our rain, the fact that Eastern Oregon can't even hay, they cut their hay, you know, usually they're like a month ahead of us, they cut their hay and they had to silo it because of all the rain that they're getting. And I know a year ago when I was at a marijuana bust, they, the police shredded the black plastic and it was blowing into hay farmers' fields. And it's like, no, you can't have plastic in hay. It decimates the value. And this year especially, we've really got to be careful with all, you know, thank goodness a lot of people have gone back into hay because it looks like the whole country is actually going to be short. Mr. DeBonne, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I was just acknowledging, you know, the, the impacts of farming, just, I think of it as noise at night, activity out in a field next to maybe possibly a resident, but, you know, even the dust created, especially, you know, letting the field dry out and then cutting and baling. Those are impacts. But yeah, letting black plastic fly to the neighbor's property is just not, not expected and not appropriate.
Well, thanks for that update then on that, the news that it's not allowable.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're at item number 11. Tanya?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner. I apologize if I sound a little muddy. Every living particle from growing things is my head today.
It's the season.
It's a little rough. Yes, so I am here to speak about a new issue to the county and to the Board, and frankly to the state, and that is psilocybin. Psilocybin is the chemical compound that is hallucinogenic, that is found in various types of mushrooms, in case people weren't aware. So I'm here initially to provide an introduction. This is kind of the first, first pass at this. We are, I'm providing an introduction on Measure 109, which legalized it in the state of Oregon. That was voted on last, actually in the fall of 2020. And just to set the table from some of the, about some of the issues that we're tracking, some of the timeline aspects and potential options for the Board of County Commissioners, with the intent of coming back in about a month, possibly less, possibly a little bit more, to actually speak to the Board about decision points and kind of actions that might be taken. But this is just meant to be the initial kind of fact dump of information, because it's a lot. It's, it's, it's new to everybody and it's, it's a lot of information. So the memo I provided you also has the text of Measure 109 attached to it. I think it's about 50 pages, as well as a Q and A that was produced by Oregon Health Authority that I personally found very helpful in just sort of getting my arms around the topic. A lot of it isn't necessarily pertinent specifically to land use and the decisions that the Board may be making, but it just kind of helps kind of give some shape to the program that has been voted on. And Peter, feel free to please jump in, and Nick, anyone really. This is uncharted territory, so we're all kind of doing our best here. So Measure 109 was voted on, on November 3rd, 2020, in the state of Oregon. Technically, it's called the Psilocybin Program Initiative. Statewide, it passed about 55.75% in favor to 44%, 44.25% against. Deschutes County was a little bit closer. Deschutes County passed it by 52.8% and 47.2% against. And the yes vote directed the OHA, which is going to be administering the program, to license and regulate manufacturing, transportation, delivery, sale, purchase of psilocybin products, and the provision of psilocybin services, that is hard to say, to individuals 21 years of age and older. And I will go into what all of those things mean. And the, the background of this, and I, I'm not a therapist, I'm not a behavioral health or medical professional, but the, the text from the bill is that it's, psilocybin in many studies has been proven to really be a, an interesting alternative to traditional medicine for addiction, depression, anxiety disorders, a lot of PTSD, veterans, end of life issues, just another modality, basically. So that is the basis for this, this ballot measure. Yes, so this, this ballot measure created a new section within the OHA in the Public Health Division Center for Health Protection. So there's a whole new division and with committees and its own kind of system of organization. The long and the short of it is that this section will be beginning to accept applications for licenses starting January 2nd, 2023. So this coming New Year's, basically. Currently, we are in a two-year development period. So that means that they're figuring it all out, the OHA, as well as kind of ancillary agencies. We're in that period right now. And there's been a couple, there's been one wave so far of rulemaking. of rulemaking. They have formed committees that are comprised of medical professionals, industry people, I believe therapists, and also kind of public health experts, there's a whole list in the actual measure of how these committees are comprised. So the rulemaking is underway, and this, and I will come back to this, but this is what makes this project very interesting, because the rules are being made while we're, the board and other jurisdictions are trying to make decisions about what to do. So these things are happening at the same time, but we don't really know all of the situation that, you know, what this is going to look like. So this is our challenge. So we are kind of imparting all of the information that, that we're absorbing from various sources to you in real time as, as we're all figuring it out together, and that includes the OHA. I know Peter has been in lots of conversations with AOC and other kind of planning director types, as well as DLCD, and just kind of everyone, everyone there to try to determine the directions. So I'll just provide a brief, brief overview of kind of what this actually means. So OHA can issue four types of licenses. Manufacturing, and manufacturing is a little bit different than with the marijuana program. In the OHA sense, a manufacturing category includes cultivation, harvesting, production, propagation, compounding, so it's kind of the equivalent of production and processing together, which is how, you know, in marijuana, those things were separate. We've since learned that the manufacturing license from the OHA will actually have subcategories, so they will ultimately be separated out, but the, the overall kind of umbrella term is manufacturing, and that includes the growing as well as the processing and those kind of activities. So manufacturing is the first type of license. Operating a psilocybin service center, which is a next kind of license, and I'll come back to that. That is the establishment at which you take the psilocybin. So the way, the way someone explained it to me that I found very helpful is, that's the, the actual service, you're not, it's not like retail with marijuana where you're going and buying the product, taking it away and kind of doing it on your own time. The psilocybin experience or administration session takes place completely supervised in a facility that is designed for this thing. So you go in and you, you do your thing and you're with somebody the whole time, and then you leave, you're not doing it outside of the premises. And that'll come in, you know, into the conversation as we figure out what this could look like on the ground. Then there's a facilitator, and that is actually the, the human being who kind of is with the, the client or customer while they're engaging in the, the experience. They have to pass a, an examination by OHA, and there's certain criteria about kind of learning about various, various aspects of the program and, and red flags and things like that. And that is actually in the current rulemaking right now, they're kind of figuring out all of the specifics of what, what it means to be a facilitator. So that's a license for a person. And then last, there's testing of psilocybin products, that's just making sure kind of the, the chemical compounds are the right amount and the right type, and they're not, you know, there's a similar program for marijuana, for cannabis, just in terms of what, what's in it, making sure there's nothing that's not supposed to be in there, in there. I'll just go briefly, so the administration session, and this is, I know it's a lot of kind of non-land use discussion, but it helps to understand the land use. For the administration session, the client is required to have a preparation session first with this facilitator, so they first have to have like a, basically a pre-screening, and I don't know the specifics if it's talking about getting deep into kind of the meat of what you're trying to discuss in your therapy, or just making sure there's not any red flags that you might kind of create some harm or, or be violent or something like that, they're making sure that you are okay to do this experience. Then, then it's the actual administration session, the facilitator is with the client at the time. From what we understand, you know, it, it could be an hour, it could be eight hours, we don't really know, it depends on kind of that dosage. And then there's an optional, what they call integration session, which is like a, a follow-up to say, and, you know, how did that go? It's a kind of a therapeutic thing, what, what worked, what didn't, how did this kind of, how did you come out of this? Okay. So that's sort of the administration session, and that's what would take place in a service center. Beyond that, it's difficult to know what these service centers will look like, and I think that is what, that's going to be the interesting part of this program. I'll pause there for a minute, and just, if there's any initial questions or thoughts, and then I might go into some more details. Anyone?
I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I'm not quite sure whether, which ones to, to, to jump into now and versus later. One, one thing I am curious about is, do we have any sense of what the, the spatial requirements are for production of these, these fungi? I mean, you know, like, do you just need a room like this size, or do you, I mean, is, I, I guess one of the things I'm trying to understand is, is, is this really a rural land use, or, you know, like, you know, something that is, that lends itself more to, to, you know, rural production and, you know, rural service centers, you know, in the, in the unincorporated areas, or is this something that you could find happening in the, in incorporated cities? And the spatial requirement seems like a piece of that, I mean, just, you know, my, just having seen, you know, you know, seeing those little, those little, like grow kits that people have for, you know, mushrooms that you, you grow and then you cook at home and, and, you know, eat in your, you know, in your omelet or whatever. It, it seems like you can grow a lot of mushrooms in a very small mass space, so.
Yes. Those are very good questions, and we had a lot of the same questions, frankly. And, and I will also preface this by, staff has been kind of reaching out to everyone we can to kind of just discuss this, whether they're attorneys or people who have been involved in the industry, people in kind of therapy or that type of thing, we're just trying to gather all information. So we're trying to filter it through for, to answer Commissioner Chang's question, on one webinar, and I believe it was with some lawyers from the state, talking about this, they mentioned that spatially, it takes, it's obviously a lot less than something like marijuana, it's just smaller. And given the amount, the amount that we're talking about in the state, they said, and this is kind of anecdotal, but they said, you know, a few big warehouses would probably cover the total amount you need in the state of Oregon. So we're dealing with a much, you know, whether that's all in Deschutes County or spread out over the state remains to be seen, but it's definitely a smaller spatial aspect, for the reasons you said, it's just smaller. But it is considered a farm crop by Measure 109. So it is, in that sense, to your question about, you know, is it appropriate in rural areas, it is, you know, a farm use permitted outright on EFU land. But we anticipate that the space involved is much, much smaller, and unlike marijuana, there probably would not be, and again, I'm not 100% sure on this yet, but it's not, like, the odor issues, for instance, are different or nonexistent for, for mushroom-producing, psilocybin-producing fungi than they are for marijuana, but the spatial use will be less.
Yeah, and if I may, I would offer, I, I have had the opportunity to engage with OHA, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Oregon Association of County Planning Directors, and to, to supplement what's in the memo and, and Tanya's remarks, the take-home messages that, that I'm picking up is, Deschutes County is one of just a handful of local governments statewide that are even recognizing that Measure 109 and psilocybin is a land use that is, if, if local governments don't do anything, will, will be a use that's allowed starting on January 2nd of 2023. So thankfully, with, with Washington County and Clackamas County, and I will say Deschutes County, we are the ones who have been elevating this to the attention of the Department of Land Conservation and Development, who has a number of responsibilities, they are now just getting involved and having conversation with, with the Oregon Health Authority as it pertains to psilocybin. And, and as Tanya noted, it is a bit alarming that Oregon, the Oregon Health Authority had, once Measure 109 was passed in 2020, they had two years to do rulemaking. Now, of course, we had a pandemic, and there's staffing challenges that are ubiquitous across the public and private sectors, but they're just now starting rulemaking, and when it comes to defining service centers and manufacturing, what that means, we're not going to know until later this fall. And as Tanya noted, Measure 109 is a use that's allowed unless local governments choose they want to opt out and refer it to the voters in the general election year. So for local governments across Oregon, we're not going to understand the, the depth and the breadth of rulemaking until later this fall, you know, close to the new year, and yet, what time, place, and manner regulations mean, what operational characteristics, production, manufacturing, and these service centers, what they mean, we won't know. And it's frustrating to staff, whose, whose job it is to alert, you know, the community and elected officials and whatnot about the, the extent that this use may represent when we don't have the answers, and the state is just now getting into some of these substantive issues, which include, you know, what is, you know, this is not necessarily land use, but in questions that I ask, how do you know the proper dosage, that's my term, I'm not an expert in the right vernacular, knowing that someone over 21, there's different body types, there's different metabolisms? How do you know what the right amount is? How do you know how long someone's under the influence? All great questions, they said, we don't have the answers yet, we will in rulemaking. Are you going to allow service centers to, to, to have outdoor, the ability to be outdoors? Production, manufacturing, and the service centers have to be indoors under the law, but will there be opportunities to be outside in a defined area? Great question, we don't know the answer to that, we're going to wait till rulemaking. What are the operational characteristics of a service center? Are they going to allow overnight accommodations? Are they going to, you know, could they become retreats? Could they become resorts? All great questions, we don't know the answers, we'll have a better sense during rulemaking. And as noted in the memo, and Tanya referred to it, unlike the, the, the measure that's in it, you know, as determined by this, you know, this attachment which acknowledges, as enacted by the people of Oregon, it really had an emphasis on medicinal and medical How it's being structured, one does not need to have a medical license to be a facilitator to dispense to, to a client to use psilocybin, you just have, you have to take and pass a test by the Oregon Health Authority. One does not need a referral by a medical provider or a professional to take psilocybin. So, not that, staff is not inserting any kind of value judgment on this, we're just acknowledging that there's a lot of unanswered questions about this use. As noted in the memo, unlike recreational marijuana, where Oregon followed the leads of the states, states of Colorado and Washington, Oregon is the first state that is, by the will of the voters, has determined that there is going, there are going to be opportunities for psilocybin to be utilized for those that are over 21 years or older. So I didn't mean to get ahead of your presentation, Tanya, but, but there's, there's not a lot of answers right now, and what, what it comes down to is, the way Measure 109 was crafted, unlike with recreational marijuana, and I know we've said this probably two or three times now, but it's worth emphasizing, it's a use that's allowed if local governments do nothing. And so then the, you know, and these will be questions and comments that we'll have at subsequent conversations likely in three to four weeks, as we present some options for the board, but, you know, local governments don't have a lot of time to determine if they want to allow this use, subject to, you know, time, place, and manner regulations, which are allowed, even though it's a, it's recognized as a farm cruise, farm crop on exclusive farm use zone property. But, you know, there's just a few months before, you know, election materials need to be made available for the November 8th general election. So for us, the timing is, is acceptable, we've been tracking this, and we knew the importance of getting this to the board as part of an educational opportunity and then talk about next steps, but I dare say that most local governments, from what I'm picking up, are not paying attention to this use, and it's a use that no one right now really has a full grasp of how it's going to operate specifically, you know, medically, as well as what it means from a land use standpoint.
So a reference point, you know, mushrooms like this grow when the conditions are right. So 30 years ago, I used to live in a rural parcel in the island of Maui, and we had a, a cow out, just one cow, but I had somebody come to the property and ask, can I go look through the cow pies? And I had no idea what he was asking about, but it was magic mushrooms. So, I mean, there's a long history of this, some people are, you know, know a lot more than others, but my, my conclusion would be that, yeah, you could probably put it, you know, in a wheelbarrow with the conditions that are right and grow enough mushrooms to, whatever, you know, affect a, a small city. So I don't think there's a, a big land use portion of this for the farming need, but this, yeah, it could really be an interesting dynamic. Couple of questions for the opt-out that was discussed, was that in the, in the original legislation voted, or measure voted on by the people, opt-out opportunity, or where did that come from?
Yes, it's in Measure 109, and I can find the reference, not right now.
No, that's fine, but so it was in the measure, though?
Yes, absolutely, and it's similar, as far as we understand, to the way, well, you're automatically opted in, but the, you may opt out and it refers it to the, the next general election, which is.
And then, so this is land use for each city also? Jurisdictions, this is the same scenario?
Correct. Production, manufacturing, and the service centers can occur in municipalities, there is an explicit prohibition for the service centers, as I recall, can't be located in, in areas that are zoned for residential uses. But that, that section of code is exclusive to cities and provides greater latitude for, for counties as it, as it pertains to, to the extent that there's support for the service centers in terms of where they can be located, there's.
So is there a clear line for rural residential, RR 10 of Deschutes County?
As, as we understand it, the, the Measure 109 and the statute that's implementing it does not preclude service centers being located in rural residential exception areas, in those areas zoned in Deschutes County for rural residential uses.
So residential neighborhoods of a city is what the definition of the measure was?
For precluding service centers, correct.
Well, we're here learning a lot today, and I, you know, looking through the memo and then having the discussion even helps more.
It's very interesting, I mean, you know, on first pass, you know, there's obviously provisions to be written or rules to be made about kind of what Peter alluded to, you know, will there be an outdoor area allowed, that type of thing, but in general, because, because it's this facilitated session, in some ways, it's largely invisible to people outside it. Is it different, and this is a question for discussion, maybe in the future, but, you know, is it, does it look different from the outside from a medical facility, even though it's not technically a medical facility? You're going into an office, you're doing your thing inside perhaps, and then leaving when you're done, I don't, I don't know, these are, these are kind of things that are stewing in our heads, or does it look more like a, a yoga retreat or something like that? Or is it, can it be both? The question of what, what potential impacts are, if any, to kind of neighboring properties, we're still kind of trying to work that out, and we don't really know. But I think there's, there's a huge spectrum of possibilities, ranging from kind of very little impact and largely invisible to a more significant impact and visible in certain areas.
Yeah, when the, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just want, when you said, "All we really need are a few big warehouses," so how, what is big?
This is what was said to me, so I, I don't, you know, this is.
I know, I wrote it down, and I'm like, okay, what is big?
I think the general gist of that conversation was more that the scale of it is largely, much, much smaller than that of, for instance, marijuana production, just because the actual, the actual product is smaller and you need less, each person needs, it's just, takes up less space. You know, what the demand will be remains to be seen statewide, but the, the general impression was just that it's, it's not going to be a tremendously large footprint throughout the state. How that shakes out county by county, we don't know.
I mean, you could, you could also imagine, you know, people, if people like a, I mean, like, I, I don't want to keep comparing this to things like recreational marijuana or alcohol, because this is, this is a, you know, this is a therapeutic or medical substance, not a, you know, recreational drug. But, I mean, you know, people really like, people are really big fans of craft beer, right? Rather than, you know, having one enormous Anheuser-Busch, you know, production facility in your state, you could also imagine people wanting to have. production facility in your state, you could also imagine people wanting to have very small decentralized kind of places where they're producing the, the, producing the psilocybin and then, you know, having a service center attached to that in a, in a very decentralized kind of way. And, you know, there's still the foot, the overall footprint might not be very big, but it might be, you know, 12 little, you know, cottage operations around the state as opposed to one big warehouse, which, you know, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not, I'm not picturing using, you know, using these therapies. But I, I wouldn't want to use stuff coming out of some big, you know, big industrial warehouse, um, you know, for my, for my mental health treatments.
County planning directors have contemplated, you know, again, this is total speculation, but just noting Commissioner Chang's kind of conceptualization of what this might mean is, is one could imagine kind of seed to sale, like, you know. So it's noted in the memo that you can grow man, local governments can choose to allow psilocybin to be produced, manufactured. And when I say distributed, distributed at a service center, all on one property. And one could imagine, what I'm calling kind of seed to sale is clients coming for several days, learning about how it's grown, how it's manufactured into an edible state. They get their, uh, pre, uh, clearing, what did you call it? The, the kind of, the preliminary kind of consultation. And then there's, then there's the, they, they, they experience the psilocybin and then there's the debriefing afterwards. I mean, that's a, that's a multi-day experience. You know, that where for, again, as county planning directors are, are kind of conditioned to think about the most intense uses, not providing any kind of judgment on whether this is appropriate or not. But one can, can contemplate that this would be, would really look like a, and function like a retreat. Just in the way you got a decentralized experience happening throughout the state of Oregon. And it's worth noting that, uh, people, you know, one doesn't have to be in, it's not limited to Oregon residents that are 21 years or older. That anyone 21 years or older can come, once these are established, can come to Oregon. These are not health services. They're not health clinics, health providers. They, they don't function that way. And people, you know, register for these experiences uh, in ways that represent something as simple as a, looks like an, an office clinic. You walk in, you get your experience, you walk out hours and hours later to something that's much more elaborate, uh, that has food, that has, uh, it functions like a retreat and has other aspects presumably associated that are tangential to the service center. But, um, I will, one point worth mentioning is I did reach out to, uh, Association of Oregon Counties to have them engage LCDC at their next, to, to suggest to them that they engage LCDC at this next meeting, really to alert LCDC and DLCD staff that this is, uh, a use that is now on the, on the radar of county, of, of county planning directors and of Oregon counties. And to understand what DLCD's role may be as, as Oregon Health Authority is making rules. I'm not sure they're really thinking about the land use component in, in ways that county planning directors are. And to understand where DLCD is on this issue, um, again, knowing that they have a lot on their plate already. Uh, but I think it'll be important for, for county staff and elected officials to know if, if DLCD or LCDC is even thinking about rulemaking and if not, when. And if not, what kind of role they'll have with Oregon Health Authority this fall as rules are ultimately put in place to implement the law, which is, it stipulates in statute that they will start accepting applications on January 2nd of 2023.
And just to add on to that, we are, uh, including kind of our building division and other divisions in these conversations because it is a kind of a building code thing as well. Um, you know, if you start to have food and beverage or overnight lodging and egress and groups and things like that, that I don't actually know about. But, you know, we're trying to kind of loop everybody in, um, as well as environmental health for, um, the food and beverage aspect of it, um, as well as.
Sedation.
Sedation. So there's all these kind of groups that we're, we're working to coordinate with and keep, uh, at the table as we figure this out together.
And, and, and we're just in transparency, we, letting the sheriff know of this. You know, uh, we, we have, we have partnerships with our sheriffs or we have a member on the cannabis advisory panel. We're just being transparent and they were made, they were given a copy of Tanya's memorandum and attachments and they were aware of this meeting. And I suspect some are, are, are listening in just, just as we all collectively get educated. And, and this will be an iterative process, I think statewide as, as more and more of our colleagues have a gr- better grasp or asking more poignant questions so that we can provide as much information ultimately to the, to you, to our elected officials, to the Board of County Commissioners to make an informed decision about how you want to proceed.
Do you know of any other jurisdictions having this conversation about now?
Great question. I think we're the first. Um, I know that Washington and Clackamas County are, are going to be having conversations very soon. Um, again, with a, with a recognition that, um, uh, you know, rulemaking is occurring imperfectly and elected officials need to make some informed decisions about, about the opt-out or not. So we are no surprise, I guess, as we all kind of grin and maybe grimace at the same time. But to my knowledge, we're the first having this conversation, which is why I think, uh, there may be some, some newsworthy elements to this conversation. Because this is the first time it's really being discussed, uh, in a public setting.
One other thing I wanted to ask about, uh, is sort of the federal overlay? Um, do, I, I have no idea, for example, whether psilocybin is a federally scheduled controlled substance or not.
It, it, it is and, um, there is, it's very difficult. This is all anecdotal, um, but there is, there is some uncertainty about how the federal government is going to respond to psilocybin. Where, uh, you know, are they, uh, whether they're going to tolerate it or whether they're going to take a more assertive role? We just don't know. I think there was a, might have been a better sense with recreational marijuana where the federal government was staking out a position or not. There was a sense that they were going to maybe take a more hands-off approach. We do not, and I would, I, none of us are in a position right now to, to, to even speculate what the federal government may do or how they will respond to, to Oregon's approach to psilocybin.
Tanya, I have a question. The board now that's 14 to 16 members, do, how many of those people are medical?
Um, you know, that's a very good question. I'd have to look it up.
I mean, I was just wondering if they, did the governor appoint the people to the board then? Or did OHA?
I, wait, I just was there and I just scrolled by it. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I was just, you know, it's like, OHA's in charge and yet they're not. And, you know, you pass an exam, but you don't have to be medical.
So the psilocybin advisory board is established within the OHA for the purpose of advising and making recommendations. It, it shall consist of 14 to 16 members appointed by the governor, um, of this subsection, including the public health director or their designee. Um, then, okay, uh, any four of the following. A state employee who has technical experience in the field of public health. Uh, a local health officer is defined in ORS, blah, blah, blah. Uh, an individual who's a member of, who, or who represents a federally recognized Indian tribe. An individual who's a repor- member of, excuse me, uh, the Addictions and Mental Health Planning and Advisory Council. Um, someone from the Health Equity Policy Committee. Uh, someone from the Palliative Care and Quality of Life Interdisciplinary Advisory Council. It's also within the OHA. Um, individual who represents individuals who provide public health services directly to the public. A psychologist that's licensed under ORS Chapter 675, um, who has experience engaging in the diagnosis or treatment of a mental, emotional or behavioral condition. A physician licensed under ORS 677. A naturopathic physician licensed under ORS 685. An expert in the field of public health who has a background in academia. Um, also science, someone who, uh, professional experience conducting scientific research regarding the use of psychedelic compounds in clinical therapy. Someone who has experience in the field of mycology. Someone for ethnobotany. Someone who has experience in psychopharmacology and experience in the field of psilocybin harm reduction. And, um, someone from OLCC who has experience working within the system developed uh, for tracking the transferred marijuana items, Department of Justice.
Okay.
That's, that's the, what's listed out there. So there are, yeah, there is a requirement for having a medical.
It looks, yeah, most of those were, weren't they, except for maybe like the OLC person?
Yeah, yeah. And that is in, um, just for reference, uh, it is in the beginning of the, it's section six of measure 109.
Okay, thank you.
If I could finish my line of thought about the federal scheduling of, uh, of psilocybin. Um, we see that a number of substances that are on, you know, on, on various federal schedules, um, the research onto the medical or therapeutic uses of those substances are, is highly suppressed. Um, so I, that, that's one other thing that I'm, I'm curious about with psilocybin is whether the fact that it has been scheduled, um, has prevented the, the medical community from being able to do research, which would be probably very valuable in, in evaluating the, the benefits of these kinds of facilities and, and how they should be, you know, how the, the treatment experience, you know, the service should be, should be structured. Um, so, uh, I didn't get a good sense from the, from the staff memo whether we, whether we know. I, in the legislation, they said, you know, there's evidence of this and this and this. But, um, I, 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 you know, for our continuing discussion on this, I'd love to know more just about kind of the, how robust the research on, on, on the, you know, medical therapeutic use of, of psilocybin is. Um, and, and whether, if, if we don't know enough, um, whether that's because the, the research is actively being suppressed and, uh, whether, I, I guess that's the kind of follow-on to that is, you know, if, if Oregon is the first state to be moving forward with this kind of a program, does that mean that there's going to be an active research kind of effort associated with, you know, the, the, trying to understand the, the, the effec- effectiveness of these treatments?
No, that's a, a really good point. And admittedly, I've been kind of focusing more on the land use aspect than, but I, I want, yeah, I will do some research. Staff will do some research about kind of the research.
Yeah.
And, you know, as we know, it's been used in other applications in kind of ceremonial type of, uh, instances and, you know, there's some parallels to kind of, uh, other kind of similar psychedelics or hallucinogens that are available in other kind of countries and cultures. And, you know, I think there is, I was just recently looking at the agenda for the most recent, um, committee meeting and there is discussion as part of the rulemaking for kind of that aspect of things as well. Uh, this is, um, a tangent from the research question, but kind of respecting those, um, kind of ceremonial, ceremonies as it, as it were, and how that kind of fits into the potential rulemaking of certain traditions and things like that. So.
I mean, you could imagine if, if, uh, if one of the, the potential values of having these facilities in the state of Oregon is to, is to support research, that people would want to have facilities, the service facilities at least, like close to large research, you know, medical research communities and institutions.
We want to be mindful of your time. This is a, a lot to digest. We are not looking for any direction. We just wanted, we knew that this was going to be a, a kind of multiple step, multiple meeting, uh, conversation. But this was, the first was to bring, bring the measure, bring our understanding to the board. And then in subsequent meetings, we want to provide, you know, some options for your consideration to continue the work with coordination of the council.
I could add one point on that. I mean, I know I'm not looking for decisions today, but I'm double checking with Steve Dennison, but it would either be your last meeting in July or your first meeting in August when you would need to determine if this is going to go to the voters. Timing wise to get the documentation and everything. So. It's already June, so that's not that far away. And I, I would certainly recommend we not wait until the last week in July or first week in August, if you're comfortable making that decision sooner. Therefore, if there are any glitches with the election documents, there's more time for us to work with the clerk's office to make sure those are in the proper form.
So a couple of thoughts. Uh, this was a, a measure on November 3rd, 2020. So, um, that would be two years later if we had that vote, uh, referring to Deschutes County voters. The state, you know, the, what I'm kind of synthesizing, what we picked up today is, you know, the, the state Oregon Health Authority, there, I'm sure there's a group of very engaged folks that are working on this. Uh, by us having this meeting today, we're going to, uh, get some focus. You know, we've been through this with marijuana where the room gets filled up for advocates and, and, you know, both sides of the, the, the discussion. Uh, so then if, if we do bring, when we bring this back for decisions like that, is there any requirement for any kind of a public hearing? Or we have outright board authority for?
Public hearing would be to refer an ordinance. So the, you, the, a public hearing associated with the ordinance adoption.
So we.
That refers the matter to the.
So that, yeah, the business of the board would be to have a public hearing on the matter, if there's willingness to do that.
Correct.
To, to put it on an opt-out.
Right. And this doesn't require a, um, emergency clause, doesn't require all three to be in agreement. It just requires a two to one vote. And the statute provides that there's not the 90-day, uh, if it becomes effective upon signing the ordinance. So if you had a public hearing, let's say on, I'm just guessing, a day, July 20th. And at the end of the public hearing, uh, you wanted to move to approve or not approve the ordinance, you could do it right then and there and that'd be the end of it.
Yeah, I'm thinking if, so.
We need a couple of weeks to notice a public hearing, so, you know, back it up a couple of weeks. And that's why I say, even though it's June 1st, we're not that far away from needing to get that done. So if the board's inclined to pursue or consider an opt-out, we're going to need to know that much sooner rather than later because there is a really tight timeline.
Well, and we have an opportunity as a Deschutes County, uh, you know, very vibrant and engaged, uh, populace on certain topics to probably have a really well-attended public hearing. I, I'm just trying to think through what, you know, the next steps here.
Maybe. I mean, I also, I mean, I want to reemphasize that we're not talking about, we're not talking about a valid measure that, uh, legalized recreational marijuana. We're talking about, uh, a valid measure intended to enable certain kinds of therapy and treatment for, you know, for, for mental health and, and behavioral health challenges. I mean, it's in some ways, we'd be just as well comparing this to, our, our interest in, in, in citing more behavioral treatment beds and facilities in the community as we would be, you know, comparing this to, to recreational marijuana. You know, I, I could imagine it's the same kinds of concerns that people would have about, you know, a, yeah, um, you know, like that, uh, treatment facility for somebody with psychosis. You know, people with psychosis, as they would having a, a service center like this located near them. And the, 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 it doesn't sound like the production of this, uh, of, of, of this controlled substance, particular controlled substances, is going to be nearly the, the scale or the kinds of, the kind of unique impacts associated with marijuana. There's not smell issues. I mean, mushrooms don't need, I don't think mushrooms need very much light. Like all the concerns about, you know, light coming out of greenhouses and things like that. I mean, I just don't, I, it's, 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 it's pretty different. You know, it, it, it's possible that, that people will be conservative. I, I haven't heard about people or concerns though.
So opting out is just opting out forever? Is that what we're talking about?
I don't know that I could say forever. Um, I don't know if there couldn't be an initiative to bring it back as, as a subsequent date.
But according to the, the.
It would require a vote. I'm confident in that. If the voters opted it out, it would require the voters to opt it back in.
Yep, that, I guess that's, yeah.
Is that the same thing with measure 110? With the, if to remove, uh, measure 110, do the voters have to opt it out?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I, I would assume so, yes, but I, I don't know directly on that. Is, that's a state measure you're talking about?
Right. It's another state measure.
But this one we get to vote on at the level of scale while measure 110?
Right.
You don't have an opt-in, opt-out at the level of.
No, it would be, I just was wondering since you were saying. Okay, well. Tanya, so do you think coming back, do you think we'll know more in a month?
I think. Rulemaking wise?
Right.
Probably not, realistically, but.
Are they meeting a couple of times a month?
That's a good question. They did just meet last week, but I don't know when that, you know, they, they noted that the next round, you know, I think they're kind of working on it, working on it, and then they adopt a bunch of rules.
Okay.
So my impression is that that's happening later this year. But they're meeting constant, constantly to.
Right.
Because there's so much to deal with. But I don't know if we're going to see a batch of new rules.
Yeah, I think our, our goal is to coordinate with Dave. We want to, we want to provide some options. I mean, there's, and we don't need to go into, I don't want to give you those, those kind of scenarios yet. But we, we, I think we owe it to you as, in a couple of weeks, and Dave is, Dave is correct, that the middle of August is the deadline for determining whether there's, whether the board wants to send this to, to the voters to reaffirm whether psilocybin production manufacturing and service, service center should occur in Deschutes County. We know that there's going to be likely several more conversations that are needed with the board. So I would expect in a couple of weeks, we'll bring back some options, give you a, respond to the research question about, you know, what kind of commitment the state of Oregon and other academic institutions have in relationship to psilocybin occurring in, in the state of Oregon. But I, I don't think we're going to have any details on the rulemaking. They're just, they're, they're, they're under a very tight timeline. And I think we're not going to see the level of specificity that you would ideally want until well into the fall. And even that may be imperfect. And so, so our goal is to, yeah, give you some, give you some options to continue to think about, to understand how they might function. And, you know, hopefully later in the month of July, the board is, is in a position where you feel like you can provide further direction to your staff. Because there's, there's some significant work that will go into whether there's an opt-out or significant work to whether or not you want to establish TPM, and also there's other possibilities in between.
So I think maybe we should, maybe we could watch one of the meetings together and just get like a feel of, okay, what are they talking about? I, because it is a whole different.
It's a different planet from.
Different climate.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the OHA page right now, and there's a research subcommittee meeting on, excuse me, June 23rd, and another psilocybin advisory board, which is kind of the, the main board on the 22nd of June. So I don't know if they have agendas up or anything, but I think that's, I'll keep monitoring that, of course, to just see if there's any salient points to distill to everybody. But it's constant, it's.
Yeah, and AOC, I want to say, and we can give you that date as well if you want to listen. I want to say, middle of the month of, of June, there's going to be another, another meeting with AOC and maybe Oregon Health Authority. I remember talking to Mallory about that. So as those, as we identified, I think it'd be worthwhile to, one of the things that we can do, whether between now and our next meeting, if there are meetings that are occurring, we can alert the board and administration, of course, to those meetings. And also, any meetings that are occurring organically with the Oregon Association of County Planning Directors, we can let you know as well.
That would be excellent, Peter.
I will say the OHA website is very extensive. I was pretty impressed with the amount of stuff. You know, if you have some free time, it's, 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 there's all kinds of subcommittees and, you know, things about scientific literature and other information from the listening session. So it is, it's been really helpful to staff, and I'm going to kind of keep looking at it every day to see if there's new things. But they seem to be aware that there's a lot that needs to be covered, and they have kind of, they're on it, a little late, but they're on it.
Yes.
One, one other thing that would be, it would be helpful for me to understand, like kind of as, as background information is, if, you know, if, if we, if we don't attempt to opt-out, if this moves forward, if there are entities in the community who want to establish, set up, you know, service centers or, you know, a manu, what do they call them, manufacturing facilities in our community, it would be helpful to understand what, what kind of, what levers or tools we have to, to, to shut something down that is operating outside the, you know, outside the realm of authorized activity? You know, I mean, if you have a service center and there are people who are having, you know, who are going outside and they are, you know, you know, having, you know, playing out trauma in a, in a, you know, in an area of the county, and the neighboring, you know, property owners are not okay with that. Like, is that, what are the, you know, are, is there a pathway? Or is, are there thresholds to be able to close something down that, that you allowed, but then you find out isn't, you know, is having impacts beyond acceptable thresholds? You know, similarly for, you know, I, I don't know, you know, for marijuana, everyone, you know, people seem to be extremely concerned about, you know, odor. But we don't know whether there's something associated with, with producing mushrooms that, you know, is just going to have impacts on, on adjacent landowners. But if we, you can, you know, if we learn of things that are, you know, unacceptable impacts, like what are the, what are the sideboards? Because it seems like, you know, opting out is, is preemptive. You know, like, we won't even, we won't even know whether there are, there are problems with these kinds of facilities. But, you know, allowing it to go forward, but having, you know, having an off-ramp, you know, you know, for, for something that's operating outside the realm of acceptable or authorized impacts, that's the other way to kind of manage and control this.
Yeah, and I think that's, just to close, I think that's one of the staff's largest frustrations, is that I don't know if we're going to know that level of specificity until later this fall. And it may even be somewhat imperfect once they're released. And so local governments don't have the luxury of just sitting back, waiting to see what rulemaking is, then determining if they want to supplement with their own TPM, because this deadline is so, is, is so short. Just again, the, you know, OHA decided for various reasons to start rulemaking on the second year. And it's put local governments in a very reactionary position. And I dare say that I think, you know, some of the scenarios that I think staff wants to coordinate with Dave on is, you know, what did, is there, are there ways to buy Deschutes County additional time to see what the rulemaking is, to understand how their local governments are approaching it, and, and then making an informed decision. So there may be, there may be opportunities to, yeah, you know, allow the elected officials, to shoot the Board of County Commissioners, to assess what these rules are, how, you know, how well-written they are, how they apply, and, and then, you know, make a decision at that point. So I don't want to kind of, we have some, Tanya has, and I have some legal theories that we want to share with Dave, that we want, I'm sure Dave will probably want to share with his colleagues across county councils. Because again, we're just, we're in a reactionary position, and it's, 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 it's not desirable because as staff and ultimately as the elected officials, you do, we don't, these questions that are going to continue to come up, we don't have the answers, and we're not going to know for months at a time, even with these committees that are convening later in June. So it's, it's, we're really operating in the dark right now.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there were ways to flex this January 2nd, 2023 date to being an accepting applications, or if that's not negotiable for us to basically say, well, we won't, we want to be allowed not to consider land use applications for this for, you know, another six months, which would, you know, give us the time to digest the rules and conceivably put something on the, the May 2023 ballot for consideration by the voters. You know, having that, that flex, you know, creating that flexibility to have some time to digest the rules and understand what the implications are.
I do think the understanding, at least, and there's a lot of uncertainty here, is it does speak the measure to the next general election. So that's why we were targeting, if you wanted to get out ahead of it, it would be November of 2022. Otherwise, I believe it would be November of 2024 before you could go back before the voters.
There may be existing uses.
Yes, and then you'd have a similar, where presumably those would be grandfathered in and.
Yeah, we have some, we have some legal theories that we want to run by, by Dave. They may not, they may not hold up, and they're not worth articulating now, but, and these have been shared, kind of bounced off internally. So we're, we're going to make, we're going to put Dave to work, or at least tap into his network. Just again, we're not the only ones that are going to be, you know, trying to figure out what options are available for this case at the county level for dealing with this shortened timeline. And it is written in state law, Commissioner Chang. It's January 2nd of 2023, it says it. And the opt-outs really, as Dave reinforced, really come into play during the general election. But there, there may be some other avenues that at least are worth discussing internally before we bring them back to you. So we look forward to doing that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, well, the discussion's been started.
Yes. What an exciting life, Tanya. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Okay, we'll do other items after lunch then. I believe we need to go into emergency now? Is that correct? Executive session?
We have executive session, executive session now, correct.
Okay.
Which one?
Litigation, please.
Is it working now? Thank you, thank you, Laura. Yes, opening up our afternoon session. First thing on our agenda is appointment of the planning commission person from Sisters. So I believe we had four candidates that we interviewed.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Yes, earlier, in the middle of May, the Board of County Commissioners, myself, Planning Commission Chairperson Jessica Kiris, and Vice Chair Susan Altman joined each of the commissioners, and you interviewed five candidates.
Oh, okay.
And so to the, to the extent that this is the time to consider an appointment for Commissioner Steve Swisher. Staff is here to answer any questions. As the board knows, there's a joint Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioner meeting scheduled for next Thursday. So an appointment, although it wouldn't be effective in, until July, would allow this person, if they have the availability, to, to sit and observe the next two Planning Commission meetings on June 9th and June 23rd, respectfully.
Okay, yes. I did count wrong. There's five. So, let's see.
So all three of us were in different panels with a different planning commissioner or staff?
Yes.
So we all interviewed all five. I want to thank everybody for getting involved. You know, it's a real exciting time. Last seat we were appointing, that was kind of quiet for the application process. Did we even open it up a second time or something? And then all of a sudden, everybody's paying attention to this. So it just switched gears on us right in the middle of the two recruitment processes. And we got two more seats a year from now also, that, just expiring seats, so.
And, yes, and we have a little bit of a hello, and I think we will be doing something to acknowledge representation from that part of our county sooner rather than later. So hopefully, at some level. Okay. So what do we do? Should we, everyone put a name in a piece, in an envelope and pull it out?
Extras?
Yes, you know, the, each commissioner has, has not divulged to staff kind of their line of thinking. So I, I, yeah, turn it over to the discretion of the chair and the commission to have that conversation. I will echo Commissioner DeBones' comments that he just made. It was, I thought all five candidates did exceptionally well, and had the pleasure of being with Chair Adair. And the interview process that afternoon, I thought, was quite productive and thought-provoking. And we're in a great position to, you know, have a representative, representing Sisters area. It was a wonderful conversation that we had together.
Yes, truly, I, um, public service in Deschutes County is at a high point, and we so appreciate that. And I, you know, I do thank the five people who stepped up and filled out the applications. And I do believe, are we going to have new forms eventually so that they don't fill out an employment application form? I think that is in the pathways at some point, right?
Yes.
Because this doesn't make sense for someone who's applying to be a volunteer. They are not applying to be a, an employee. I know some people had commented earlier for positions on the form, and so hopefully we can get that done in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I think it happens.
Similar, you know, there's, there's a lot of fields in the applicant, in the employment application form that are relevant information, but there's other stuff that's, that's not. And, and yeah, having them fill out an employment application form is not, is not, doesn't send the right message.
Right. So, I know.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Whitney or Kathleen, I know they streamlined the process, but I haven't seen what the streamlined application process is, based on Commissioner Dare, your suggestion many months ago, that we do that. And so I had understood that that happened, but I haven't seen what the forms look like now.
Well, it still says employment application on the top.
Yeah, and that's, it's not, it's clearly not an employment application, it's a volunteer application.
Right. So, and maybe if it can stick out more on the website, you know, a little more like a pop to it or something? I don't know. I've heard sometimes people have a hard time finding it.
Yep.
So a bit more personalization would be nice. Well, okay, so who wants to go first? Commissioner DeBones?
So I really, as I say, appreciated interviewing all five. I would be happy to support Matt Cyrus for this position, and then also have, you know, kind of a backup name to be able to discuss too.
Okay. Do you want to say that, or you want to hold that?
I don't know, I mean, how far we want to go.
Commissioner Chang?
I, I appreciated all of the candidates, and their thoughtful responses. There were two people who I thought stood out within the field. And I was looking, as, as I was sitting through interviews with people, I was looking for, for three things. You know, someone who could do the work, you know, read the packets, you know, intake all sorts of information, both presented and, and otherwise, engage the public and listen, and, and come out of all of that. And then one of the other things I was really, I was really looking for was someone who'd be able to work with the rest of the planning commission as a team, with all of that, all of that information, and, and help deliver excellent recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. I, one of the also, one of the things I also noted during the, during the process was that certain candidates had some, you know, unique or really specialized expertise that would be very beneficial to, to the planning commission. And that's what, that what, that's what led me to ultimately have as my first choice Roger Johnson, who, who could do all of those things that I mentioned, you know, do the work, work with the planning commission, and, but also brings with him, you know, an intimate knowledge of Senate Bill 762, which we will spend a great deal of time working to integrate into, into the way we, we build and live on the landscape in Deschutes County in the next couple of years. So I, you know, because Roger offers that unique additional in-depth expertise on, on something in an area where that we desperately need, I, I think he would be an excellent addition to the planning commission right now.
Thank you for those remarks about Roger. I know, I, I thought Roger was, I'm really glad that he's working on 762, and I really want 762 to be done timely. So I, I'm not sure at this time that he, you know, that I would want him on the commission. I actually have my sheets in order, and Matthew Cyrus is on the top. I'm, you know, Matt's been here in Deschutes County a long time, his family's been here a long time. And just looking at the board, I feel like he brings an historical presence to the planning commission. So if he is willing to serve, I, I think that would be great. He does a lot of other things. Perhaps he may find that. He does a lot of other things, perhaps he may find that, you know, I think this is an important position and for the future, I, you know, I'd like to see Matt on the Board. And also I want to recognize that Mark Kelly is on our Facilities Advisory Review Committee and he actually happens to be a neighbor of mine and he happens to be a very kind neighbor of mine. And so anyway, I just want to acknowledge that he had also applied, but I'm really happy that he's on the Facilities Advisory Board. So I, I feel like he can contribute a lot to that group and that's, that's important too.
Mark Kelly was, was close second for me to, to Roger Johnson.
Yeah, no.
Those two would have been my, my, my top picks.
And Roger's the other name that I would have had here too.
Okay.
Funny. So, and I would say for any of these folks, if you want to get something done, give it to a busy person. These, you know, everybody that we interviewed are just involved in a lot of different parts and pieces of the community and their, their, you know, just their, their activities. So as I say, it's a thanks to everyone, but that was, you know, one of those thoughts for Matt Cyrus and Roger Johnson was, man, these guys have a lot of things going on. But I want to thank them both for.
Well, I want to thank all five of them for taking the time and filling out the application.
Oh, yeah.
And know that we will have more available spots in the, in the future, so.
So with, with saying our piece here, another few words about Mr. Cyrus, you know, there is a long history there and, you know, the Planning Commission itself. As I say, I celebrate that we, you know, let's, let's look at these issues and a wide open, different point of view opportunity. This is the Planning Commission. So we've got some, you know, pushback for the last appointment I supported and, you know, I don't know what's going to happen here, but I mean, this is, people are getting engaged all of a sudden in the Planning Commission. I mean, maybe it's just a point in time or it's going to go on for a while, but all of a sudden, the Planning Commission's a real interesting area. It's that opportunity to really take direction from the work plan that we talked about today. Planning Director is going to be able to, you know, put the list of items together that need to be discussed each month. And let's have that diverse conversation about the push and the pull in the, in the rural area and the land use. So I really liked, you know, the, the appointment says they're going here, I'm excited about it.
Great. Do we need a motion then?
Please.
Okay, a motion, please.
Yeah, so seeing support from two, I'll just take the lead here. So I'll move Matt Cyrus as the Planning Commissioner for the Sisters area.
Will I second it?
I don't know if it's, yeah.
Yeah.
I won't, I, I won't be voting with you on that.
Okay. So any discussion? No? Okay, Commissioner DeBones?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair votes yes.
Great, thank you. I'll learn all the candidates personally myself this afternoon and appreciate them as a process.
So you, will you call them or something?
All the other ones, yeah. I will call all, all the five candidates and let them know of the decision.
That's really good, Peter, because we have not always had nice adequate after these kind of things and it's really, I think it's really very respectful to call people. So thank you for doing that, taking the time. Okay, so now do we have a public hearing?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Tarek Rawlings, I'm an Associate Planner with the Community Development Department and today, just like you'd mentioned, is a continued public hearing for the Road Department's request for a nighttime noise variance. This is for approximately three weeks of construction work that is a bridge approach repairs and pavement rehabilitation along Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road between Tumalo Place and 19th Street at Tumalo Junction as it's, or Deschutes Junction as it's commonly called. This, the date range is being requested acknowledging that today's date is the actual continued public hearing would be from June 2nd until August 31st. And again, for about a three-week period of construction activities within that range. We did go through a bit of the procedural opening, but I've again brought it before you today. I think that the script is going to be largely the same as, as a couple of weeks ago, but just for Chair Adair, there's.
Do you want me to start with my script then?
I think so, I think that'd be the next step here. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time and place set for a continued hearing on file number 247-22-000243-V, a request by the County Road Department for a nighttime noise variance to construct bridge approach repairs and pavement rehabilitation on Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road between Tumalo Place and 19th Street. Staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be followed.
And I'm just going to share my screen here very briefly. Looks like hesitation's there. So yeah, just as the Chair had indicated, the file number today is 247-22-000243-V. And we will be, excuse me, so the hearing procedure today, or excuse me, I'll just kind of start from the beginning here. The hearings body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a request for a nighttime noise variance to construct bridge approach repairs and pavement rehabilitation on Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road between Tumalo Place and 19th Street. This is again being requested by the Deschutes County Road Department. All testimony shall be directed to the hearings body and at the conclusion of this hearing, the hearings body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will explain Zoom, telephone and in-person participation. Staff will provide a brief report. The applicant will then present their testimony and evidence. Any appellants will then present their testimony and evidence. Any other opponents and/or proponents will present their testimony and evidence. And then any other interested persons will present their testimony and evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. And then if requested by the hearings body, staff will provide some closing arguments or, excuse me, closing comments. To comply with House Bill 2560, the hearing will also be conducted using Zoom. And I note that there are no in-person attendees who appear to want to provide testimony today and I would ask our producer if there's anybody on phone or Zoom, there are none. And so I'm going to skip all the way to slide 11 here. There is a, an area map, seeing that there's no testimony, we'll just kind of go into the facts of the application here. There is a, this map is provided on page 239 of your packet. It's similar to the previous materials provided in packet, but this is basically the, the map that shows any kind of impact area in terms of noise of the equipment that may be used. So that radius is where all the notice of this public hearing and this request were mailed to the individual property owners. This again is not an exact address, but it's within Sections 26 and 27 of MAP and Tax Lots 1612 of the county's map. So that's pretty much just surrounding that Deschutes Junction area. The, we talked about the, the detailed request, the noise variance is for nighttime construction, which is why this is an actual variance for the noise standards. It's bridge approach repairs, there's probably five or six of these little bridge crossings over canals and other features along that, that particular roadway. Activities, construction activities are expected to take three weeks and beginning no sooner than June 2nd tomorrow and no later than August 31st of this year. So the only new things are that since our last initial public hearing on May 18th, we've received one public comment from last name Reams of just one of the people that were noticing, they didn't have a problem with the, with the proposal. That's included in your packet. What is not included in your packet is an agency comment from Central Oregon Irrigation District, which I just kind of handed you a standalone comment for. They have a canal that runs through sort of the eastern side through that kind of gray stone area there. So that's, they were essentially saying, if you're going to affect any COID facilities, please reach out and coordinate with us, making note that there were no irrigation rights and things affected, stuff like that. Pretty, pretty standard comment for them. And so with all that information in mind, the next steps potentially would be for you to potentially continue the public hearing to a date and time certain if further details needed or further discussions needed. You can deliberate today and/or.
We don't have to go through, do we have any conflict of interest because we already did it at the first hearing?
We, you, you're welcome to do that again. I would honestly, without legal counsel here, I think it might be worthwhile.
Well, you highlighted it.
I think that's, I would, my personal opinion would probably be it couldn't hurt to do it again, so. Yeah, I think that with that, there's the next steps there. There's questions for myself if you're, if you'd like to ask any. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing and turn it back over to you, Chair, for sort of where the, where the script picks up.
Okay.
Oh, and I, sorry, I have a couple before that. A full written version of the hearing procedures are available at the table at the side of the room. And at this point, Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases or conflicts of interest.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose and I can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose.
And I did have my sign on the property, but it's been taken down. I believe I can proceed. The hearings we disclosed now, does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner, member of the hearings body based on ex parte contacts, biases or conflicts? Is anybody, there's no one here? Okay. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Seeing none, the hearing is open and the staff will proceed with a brief staff report, which we've already done.
Yep.
So it's, you know.
The details were out there even a couple of weeks ago, but I appreciate that we kind of reviewed a lot of the.
Okay, good.
Key project details today, but yeah, available for any questions you might have.
So the, the work may literally start tomorrow. If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, so, so deferring this out to a future date is, is in my mind off the table.
Sure. And I mean, we, I, I've adjusted the dates kind of accordingly when we had to continue from the last one. That would be, we could do that again, but hearing your thoughts on that, it sounds like it might not be the preferred route.
Do they like to do this when we don't have a lot of rain and things?
I think.
Does it matter?
I think Odie was kind of alluding to, yeah, I mean, summer months are better weather and, and such, but I, I think it was, you know, it's kind of the season of construction essentially and they have priorities for sort of these bidded larger projects, so. And just as further detail, maybe to Commissioner Chang's point, my understanding is that the Road Department intends to offer this up as a bid and put this out as a, as an RFP within the, kind of the first phase. And so I don't think that June 2nd date necessarily correlates to like actual construction activities on, on site. I think they intend to issue this as a bid first and get some respondents.
Okay. All right. We get a couple of respondents then. Any other discussion?
Well, just acknowledging this is a process to really notify the, the geographic neighbors that, oh, by the way, you know, now they have the full set of information, there could be a couple nights out there where there's a lot of beeping and, and truck noise, but that's the value of this. It was mentioned, this is a high volume, high traffic area and it, it's going to be optimal to be able to do it late at night and, yeah, it probably needs to be done during the summer because it's probably hard to put asphalt down in the snow.
No, and it's always nice if you could coordinate your vacation, if you're taking one with.
Well, there you go. See that, yeah, give some family members the opportunity to be out of town.
Exactly. Well, if they're given enough of a notice when it actually happens, it's going to be scheduled?
Right.
Do we do that?
Yeah, within the document, it's required that they give 15 days notice at least when.
The real time of.
Before they start making actual noise out there, exactly.
Nighttime noise, yeah.
Correct, yep.
Oh, that's good. So 15 days notice.
Yeah. That's baked into the, the document that you would be potentially approving today.
All right. And Laura, there, there's no one on Zoom that wants to say anything. Okay, all right. Any other comments then? Do we want to close the hearing?
I think there'd be, yeah, the closing and then may potentially a motion for.
Okay.
Treating the document and the actual request.
So just for acknowledgement, I'm supportive of this noise permit.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion. I think, is this, is there a document? Yeah, here we go.
Yes.
Approval of document number 2022-378 noise permit relative to the Tumalo Road, Deschutes Market Road from 19th Street to Tumalo Place activity.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBones?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So.
And then I'm not sure if there's a step to formally close the public hearing, but that might be the only other.
Oh, I meant, yes, to close the public hearing before we vote it.
Here we go.
Great.
There's no further questions, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for making it a time certain.
You have a great day, thanks a lot.
Uh huh, thank you. All right, so. Do we have any other business today? Nope. Okay.
I'll just briefly mention that, uh, well, first off, Friday is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Last year, we did a proclamation, I don't think we're going to have the opportunity to do that this year, but I wanted to recognize and acknowledge that that will be on Friday, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And at this moment in time in our nation, there's certainly a whole lot of people who are concerned about gun violence, so would like us to recognize that. I'll also just briefly mention that I'm headed to Sisters right now and Senator Merkley will be there and he will be speaking with people from the Deschutes National Forest about money that's in the pipeline from the infrastructure bill to do a lot of fuels reduction work on the Deschutes National Forest in the next five to 10 years. I, I think that something like 40, 40, $41 million were allocated specifically for work on the Deschutes National Forest and I'm just going to go up there to, to thank him for his role in making those funds available.
Are they going to do any logging?
Of course they're going to do logging.
We're allocating. No, but I meant, yeah, we're talking about spending $41 million, but what would be the offset for the logging?
The Deschutes National Forest is producing about 50 to 60 million board feet of saw timber per year as part of its thinning activities that increase resiliency of the forest to wildfire. And without that 50 to 60 million dollar, a million board feet per year, we wouldn't have a sawmill at Gilchrist. So, yes, there will be, there will be saw material, there will be the post and pole and pulp chip material that is processed at Quicksilver Contractings Integrated Small Wood Yard in Le Pine. And there'll be other kinds of wood fiber produced through the work on the Deschutes National Forest.
Which reminds me of why I was trying to get a couple million dollars for the Gilchrist Mill to take 600 freight trucks off of Highway 97 and actually improve their railroad capacity. That was one of the projects in Connect, Oregon from our region. Somehow it didn't get funded, but it was, it's a really great project and thank goodness they're here. I think it's 130 family wage jobs at that, at that mill. So wonderful that they're in our community. So anything else, Commissioner?
I'm going to go to the COIC Board meeting tomorrow night, just kind of as a, as the alternate, because it's the budget meeting, so I've done that in the past over the years. So just attending, I'll be in the audience or whatever.
Okay. And I was on the Terriban Water District meeting last night. We've heard from a lot of neighbors down there that actually have wells and they have been approached by the Water District and they are not happy because they really feel like they have functioning wells. And so it was an interesting, yes, I'm sure I'm going to be hearing from more people in that community, what, what they're going to be doing. So that was last night. They have a meeting, I believe on June 14th in two weeks. So, okay, all right, Laura, thank you. Meeting adjourned and we will be meeting next Monday.